Okay, let's have a change of theme. The next question from a reader of the news is: How would you use your role as councillor to improve the air quality in Queen Edith? How would you use your role as a councillor to improve the air quality in Queen Edith? I know various friends and colleagues who were saying there was dramatic change in the air quality during Covid, as far as traffic, and that has got back to how it was before. So something perhaps needs to be done. I think as per our list, we start with Beth this time. So if I can ask you to address that one about air quality, please.
Great, thanks. So, you know, I think this comes down to having a sort of integrative transport strategy, which is part of the city council's job to think about. And, you know, thinking about how we move around the city from when we step out of our front door, take our kids to school, go to the local pharmacy or hospital, and how we can move in a way that often promotes active transport and travel. So that means walking, cycling if we're able to, but also access to good bus routes and buses, so that we are able to use public transport where possible and reduce those emissions. And of course, our council at the moment has a pledge to achieve the City Council operations net zero by 2030. So this is absolutely critical. And, you know, one of the things that we're supporting is to bring the buses back into local franchise, locally franchised buses, so that we can make buses affordable for residents, you know, cut the price of transport, public transport across the city. I'm a keen cyclist, my husband is a bike mechanic, so we're very pro cycling city. And I would love to see better cycling infrastructure across Queen Edith. And, you know, I know that there are plans in development, but we need to see those pushed forwards as well, so that more people can get on their bicycle if they are able to, and to take those, you know, take those decisions about active transportation, walking, cycling across the city.
Imi, let's pass the microphone to you and ask the same question about improving air quality in Queen Edith. What can, would you do as a city councillor to work on that?
Well, I have met with the Pus School about the council's air quality plans, and have offered to meet with other schools and colleges in the area. I'm also promoting biodiversity through supporting Nightingale Gardens biodiversity bid. And I'm hopeful that I can work with local residents on multiple different roads, including Beaumont, Uston Way, Gun Hill, in order to build small biodiversity patches, one of which is involved in a, I cannot remember, a bee-related scheme to try and increase the amounts of them in the area. They've already been doing quite well with birds and butterflies, so we're hopeful for this one as well. And I'm also hoping to work on preserving our verges, either adding more bulbs together with local communities, or just reseeding them with wildflower seeds and improving their biodiversity and other qualities.
Thank you very much, Imi, and finally to you, Oliver Fisher.
Thank you. So I guess when we're talking about air quality, we're really talking about what are we going to develop the cars? And I know this is, you know, the congestion charge was not a popular thing in lots of the communities around Cambridge, and a lot of protests about it. I think the Greens, you know, we are broadly, we were broadly in favour of some sort of congestion charge, but it probably went too far too fast. You know, we probably have, we do have too many people driving into the city, and the way to tackle that is through having better public transport. So investment in public transport is really vital, we need to find money to do that. So things like the workplace, they're taxing parking spaces for businesses in the city, that is one option. But of course, that does, it could create some other problems with businesses moving out of the city, which we probably don't want either. So there's no easy solution to this. I think, you know, if we could encourage more people to drive electric cars into the city rather than petrol or diesel cars, that would be great. Perhaps maybe restricting people driving diesel cars into the city would be a really good idea. And we also need more, more electric buses, because I know not all the buses are electric yet, but, you know, we could have all of the buses being electric, and that would make a big difference. And then obviously, I am a massive supporter of people cycling. I think, you know, we do have some good cycling infrastructure in the city, but more investment in that space would be welcome, so those are areas that I would be looking at.
Any questions on the air quality in the ward?
The cold weather, we live near Almose, people are having log fires, wood burning, because I can smell it, smoke. There's a hospital up the road, and I know I started coughing, but I'm susceptible now. As you get older, you get more susceptible to these things. And, you know, reduce your gas heating, but burn wood, that's not a good idea. I know there's a cut-off point at Baiting Street, I think that's right, no wood burning, but... Is it? What's your answer? No, the question is, how can you bring in an enforcement, no wood burning?
Sure, right on. Yeah, I think that is, I think that is a problem. Yeah, I don't think people should be burning logs, coal in the city. I think, you know, we're talking about air pollution, you know, the particulates that come from those, you know, from log burning, log fires, it's particularly bad in the city. So it's a really difficult, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I would say like ban it, but then maybe it's some sort of consultation with people or making people aware of the damage that they're doing. You know, they might feel like, I'm really cosy in my home and it's saving me money, but actually it's making people ill, and maybe people would take a different position rather than just like outright, we're just going to ban it. But, you know, of course, that's what happened in London in the 50s, because people were dying. So, you know, ideally I would say, yeah, let's stop using our log burning stoves in the city, that would be good.
Imi, any thoughts on that? Would you be in favour of banning log burning in the city and people's homes?
That is a really difficult question. I can understand that the smoke is definitely an irritant. Maybe, I've heard there are other things you could burn. I had a neighbour who had a small wood burner. And there are other things aside from wood that are allegedly better for the environment and will produce less smoke. So making people aware of options like that, or as you say, just making people aware of the situation. It may be that they don't even realise, they think it's such a small amount of smoke. But if everyone on the street has the same idea, then it's going to be a cumulative effect. So I'd say education, understanding, and working with people to mitigate the issues.
Beth, I have the same question to you.
I mean, I'm not sure, I mean, this is genuinely, I'm not sure what the city council could do. But I definitely, you know, if you were writing to me and telling me, you know, that this was a problem in the street, I would definitely be looking into it. And for understanding a bit more about what the problem was in the local area, and then, you know, educating myself about what powers the local city council does have when it comes to log burning stoves, and I genuinely don't know, I'm afraid.
Okay, let's move to the next question, again a slight change of theme. We'll start this time with Imi. So again, questions submitted to us. The plans for GB2, the big project just up the end of the road here, include the provision of much-needed community space. How would you ensure that the city council engages with the Queen Edith Community Forum and residents over how this community space is commissioned? So if we're thinking about the big project just near Edinburgh, it's GB2, and they are talking about providing a lot of community space. How can you ensure, as a councillor, that the city council engages with us, residents, with the forum, and other relevant authorities to make sure that the space provided is what the community wants? Slightly rephrase the question, but it's about how we talk to them, how we make sure we get the community space that we want. What would you be able to do?
So in relation to this, I'm going to talk about the new Nightingale Pavilion. So that was recently opened, and I myself ran a small open day to allow the locals to come in, to view the space, and talk about how it might be used. So things like that, events and communication, street letters and surveys, ways for the public and the residents to say what they might want, us to tell them what the options actually are. Basically, education and communication, making sure they don't feel like they're on their own and we're on their side.
Okay, and do you think that's what happened with the Nightingale Pavilion? Is that, you refer to that? I mean, we wanted to talk about GB2, but you bring up Nightingale Pavilion. Was that, did that work, did that communication work for you?
So I wasn't, I wasn't part of most of the Nightingale Pavilion work. I was lucky enough to come at the tail end when it was actually built and mostly functional, which was a very nice place to be. My predecessor, Sam Davies, was the one who did most of the work related to that. She did a lot of communication and speaking to residents to make sure the space was as they would like. One of the things I have done in relation to the space is related to a Nightingale Community Garden. So the community garden used to have electricity run from the previous pavilion, but when that got knocked down, that got cut off, and the electricity line got lost. So I've spent the past couple of months explaining, where did the electricity line go? And can we do it back up to reconnect the electricity to the pavilion to allow them to do more community activities?
Okay, let's bring it back to the question about GB2 specifically and community spaces there. And the questioner wants to know how the City Council can engage with Queen Edith Community Forum and other residential, resident groups to make sure that we get the space that we need. Oliver, pass that to you.
I'll be there.
Thank you. So I'm not particularly familiar with GB2, so there would be on that. The one I'm going to talk about is what I was doing, what we were doing when I was in Teresham. So one of the things that we were involved in was play equipment across the community. So I think, you know, having, actually having events in the schools to kind of ask the children what they wanted. So I'm assuming that the community space might involve some things for children, so we could do something like that. And then what we also did was, once we started to make decisions about the things that we were going to do, we then surveyed the community to make sure that the community was also on board. So the children might come up with a crazy idea, and then, you know, we wanted to make sure that the local residents were on board with that. So I think it's sort of a combination of things, maybe. So you have some events, you encourage people to come in and talk to you, whether that's children or other people, and then maybe you do some surveys once you know what you're going to do.
Okay, thanks for that. And Beth, I'm going to have one more go at bringing back to GB2.
We'll try.
And see your, hear your thoughts about it.
I think, I think a lot's been said about it. How do you, how do you make sure there's local consultation? I think that's really the question, isn't it? And I think for me, it's about making sure people are engaged really early on in the process. So not once the plans have been drawn up and then, you know, who wants to use the community space? It's about engaging with local communities early on in the development and the planning, so that, you know, things like proper accessibility for people are properly considered, how are people going to travel to the community centre, and in what ways, you know, can everybody access it, the community centre? And, you know, so, you know, in terms of how you do that, Queen Edith Forum is a great example of how you can bring a community together to share views, and this is a great example of that. So, you know, you could have events like this early on in the development, where you talk about the plans, and local residents are able to provide their views and ideas. I would also be engaging with local schools as well to understand what the needs of the community are, what kids need in the local area, and, you know, local charities and other community groups as well. And I think it's about that early on consultation and engagement.
Okay, we're going to begin the next question with Oliver. Sorry, yes. Yes, mine not.
Hi, sorry, just in case you don't know, my name's Claire. I'm now the chair of the Queen Edith Community Forum, I've taken over from Sam. And I just want to pick up on that question of, one of the big problems that we had, because I worked with Sam on trying to get the pavilion up and running. One of the big problems we had was that the councillors and the relationship between Queen Edith Forum, and particularly the council and the staff within the council, were not communicating with us. What we're really, what the forum needs to know is how will the new councillor actually work as a conduit between the council themselves and the community forum? We don't, without Sam, we do not have somebody who's there on the inside. I cannot be on the inside, I have, for enough reasons, I don't have the time that Sam had. But it's really important that that relationship between the councillors, the council workers, and the forum is maintained. And I'm really interested to know, which is sort of picking up on that previous question, of how you think that can happen?
If you're after that.
I want to very quickly answer that. I didn't quite hear whether, Imi, you said mostly functional or modestly functional. Because as far as I understand, an awful lot of consultation went into replacing the previous building. But now that it's built, we don't seem to have the support and the funding to actually use it. So it's not a question of not knowing what's needed, it's a question of doing it.
Okay, let's address Claire's question first. The Queen Edith Community Forum is a hugely important communication tool amongst many other things, between residents and the council. And there's an element of that communication not having worked as well as it might do, and fears that it may not improve. What can you, what would you all bring to make sure that not only does it not get worse, but it improves? Whoever has the microphone can grab it, this is Oliver, to you.
Yeah, I mean, I think we all benefit from Sam's, you know, activism and, you know, all of the communication that she gave both ways. So, you know, she, you know, the inward communication to the council, working on the inside, as you say, but also the outward communication to local residents and her, you know, which was so brilliant. And, you know, I would hope if elected that I could, you know, try and emulate some of that in the sense that, you know, you've got to be working constructively from within the council. You know, we do have the Labour executive planning, and, you know, and if we had a Labour councillor, I would hope that I would be able to work constructively with my Labour colleagues on the council, to make sure that, you know, communication was happening both ways, not just at councillor level, but with the officials as well, because that is so important. And I think Sam showed us how well it can be done.
So at my last hustings, I was asked how I would communicate with residents and how Sam had done so brilliantly with her blog. So I promised them that I would communicate and come up with some sort of blog-like replacement, which I did, a newsletter that is distributed by the Queen Edith Community Forum. That's how I distribute the information about what I've been doing and how I communicate with the Queen Edith Community Forum, because they're brilliant! They've set all of this up, they run all of their things, they help with the food hub and Skip Day, which I volunteer at, it's just communication, really, that's all we need to do.
Do you want to address the question about the pavilion as well?
Oh, the mostly or modesty one, yeah. It was, at the time of the open day, it was mostly finished. There was still some work needed on the pathway outside, it still had some fencing up. And I've been working with the council SOS team at the front of the building to clear some very persistent dog roses, which we're hoping to replace with wildflower seeds and a bike rack, and hopefully a notice board, so people know what's going on. But that's more for the pavilion team than it is for me to decide.
Actually, the problem was the functionality, not finished state. It was, is there security? How is it to be now?
So currently, the key is in a key box, which will be given the code to upon renting the room. And there are keys inside the building, most of the doors are locked behind a secondary key system. You'll have the key for the hall covered, which has a secondary key box for the rest of the rooms, and some of the outside doors as well.
Thanks, Oliver. Do you want to address the issue of communicating between council and a forum such as the Queen Edith?
Yeah, of course. So I'm assuming the Queen Edith Community Forum meets regularly? Is that what happens, or is it just a group that is in the community and you talk to each other? Does it, do you actually have meetings?
We, I, ooh.
Sorry, I, sort of yes or no.
I'm certain to give us a plug for the Queen Edith Community Forum. The Queen Edith Community Forum is a group of local residents who, we do meet, we can meet, we try not to meet, we try to do things rather than meet, basically. So we do, we run this hustings to try and encourage local democracy. We do run the Skip Day, we're looking at running a variety of other events in the future. It's going through change with the fact that Sam is no longer chair, that I am instead, and we need more people involved. So anyone here, I will use this object to plug, anyone here wants to join us with a pink t-shirt? Please do, we really do need extra people so that we can try to deliver lots more for our brighter, brighter Queen Edith, which, yeah.
Okay, so I would be happy to attend meetings, I would be happy, you to contact me and just say, you need to speak to me over the phone, or whatever. And then I would be able to give you updates about how council work is going, and then you could tell me the issues that you have, so yeah, absolutely. If I am elected, I will throw myself into this role, I will spend as much time as I can. You know, I have a busy life, but, you know, I will be dedicated to this role, and I will work very, very hard for this community. And so I will absolutely talk to you, and as much as you need me to talk to you, so.
Let's move on to the next question. Oliver, you keep the microphone, I think we kick off with you for this one. We want to, a reader has asked us to ask you to tell us how you would improve recreational facilities for young people. The reader was thinking of broadly speaking teenagers, but let's, we can extend that to young people, people under the age of 18. So what would you do to improve recreational facilities?
Yeah, so, you know, I'm really passionate about this. I, you know, I have teenage children, and so, you know, having places for children to go and, you know, do wholesome activities is very important. So, you know, absolutely, I would be encouraging investment in the existing, you know, existing infrastructure that we have, and then also to try to improve that where we can. I mean, that was one of the things that we were doing in Teresham. We put in some fantastic new equipment in Teresham, we built a skate park, you know, we were, we were... We had play equipment that was very appropriate for kind of younger children, but the skate park was something that we did because we knew that it wasn't something for teenagers. And actually, although the residents had some issues with it, the kids loved it, and that was really important. Because, you know, teenagers need places to go, to hang out, you know, they did some, you know, they did some really cool stuff there, they would video themselves and things like that. So, you know, it was, it was really great. And, yeah, so, you know, I'm very passionate about this subject, and, you know, it would be one of my priorities, I think, you know, doing this role, I would be very focused on this, in this space.
Okay, I'm going to name check everybody as we're going through this round, just so you can remember who everybody is. So that's Oliver Fisher from the Green Party. I'm going to hand the microphone next to Beth in the direction we've been going. So Beth Gardner-Smith from the Labour Party. Again, your thoughts on provision for young people in our ward?
Yeah, so I've got slightly younger kids, so they're still at primary school and smaller as well. So not quite there yet, but actually Oliver's stolen my thunder, and it's not just because Paul's here, but I would love to see a skate park in Queen Edith as well for some of the younger, for some of the teenagers. And, you know, I think that there are some recreational facilities, such as in Nightingale Park, I think, you know, that the playground there can really do with a facelift, certainly, I know, taking the kids there. And we do have a basketball court there, which is really well-used, making sure that, you know, that's, you know, if we could expand on that, that'd be fantastic. But, yeah, I'd love to see a skate park in this side of Queen Edith, certainly. And, you know, in terms of how I'd go about that, I would want to speak to local parents also. Kids in secondary schools understand what they want to see from Queen Edith, really, you know, what improvements could be made in terms of things that are available to them.
And final speaker for this question is Imi Blackham, Oregon, the Democrats.
Well, I think more youth centres and more areas for teenagers to exist in. But what I'd be more interested in is activities. I've talked about how I've been a volunteer for most of my life, and during my youth, I was a part of a different community forum, where I ran a very eclectic mix of activities for younger people. I managed to get teenagers involved in poetry through rap. I was involved in music workshops and drum-related activities and dance. You have to go to them, you have to ask what they're actually interested in. You can't just set something up and expect them to come. When I was working in Germany for the German federal government as a sort of a sponsorship programme, I was doing volunteering all across the city. And one of my favourite experiences was the Lost Music Festival. So it was this music and art in this actually condemned building. They'd gone a structural engineer in to tell them how many people they could let on the top floor before floorboards would collapse. Now, I am not suggesting we do this in Queen Edith. I am suggesting that art and culture, dance and music, are things that everyone is interested in. There have got to be people in the community who would love to run events like that. If we can find them, if we can get the kids engaged, it would be such a wonderful experience for everyone.
Thank you. So I'm now going to move to something that's slightly off-topic, but not totally your remit. But it's one that everybody is talking about, so I just wanted your input into this. So I've already said, it's not directly your remit or the council, this particular council's remit. But what role might you as councillors play to ensure that the potholes in the roads throughout this ward get fixed, given that so many residents are talking about it?
Lots beyond kids around.
Now, as I say, it's not, it's not a city council issue as such, but I imagine that as councillors, we will have plenty of constituents coming to you, because they will use every forum, we will use every forum to bring this issue up. And it's a big issue, it's a safety issue, and it's, you know, it touches on lots of areas. So forgive me for straying into a non-remit zone, but it would be interesting to see if you think, and what influence you think you could have on this specifically, and that might shed some light on your feelings about such related issues that perhaps not directly in your remit. So I'm going to begin with Beth, please.
I might just corner this man here, in fact, who might have actual responsibility for this issue. And because as we know, it's a lived-done issue in the county council, I think at the moment. And to make sure that he's aware of the number of potholes that are across Queen Edith that really need looking at, and let's not patch them, let's deal with them properly, so that they don't just, you know, they don't just reoccur after a couple of months or a year. But, I mean, you're right, I mean, I've heard from lots of people who are really frustrated by it, and, you know, I cycle across the ward, and it is dangerous, and particularly if you're fearing out to try and avoid a pothole, you know, that's how accidents can happen. So I understand people's frustrations. In terms of your question, how you would actually, in the city council, as you said, it's not a city council issue, but certainly, you know, the city council does work constructively with the county council on transportation issues. And it's about raising the state of the roads and making sure that there is, you know, there's proper investment and in those, in the issues. and in those, in the issues. So, yeah, working constructively with our county council partners and neighbours.
So Imi, for the lived downs, what would you do and how would you bring pressure to Beth to try and get this problem fixed?
Well, as you said, this is not within my remit, but I have already attended the Transport and Highways Committee in order to inform them of the issues in Queen Ediths, all of our little potholes and roads. And they have, if anyone's noticed, started patching those up. Some potholes have just magically got fixed. And I've also been working on trying to get the manhole covers fixed. If anyone's driven down Fenton Road and heard what sounds like a gunshot under your car, that would be the drain cover, which will be getting fixed at some point. I have raised that one.
Thanks, Imi and Oliver.
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously, this is an issue across the whole country. I can't remember how many thousands of potholes there are, probably millions of potholes, I guess, I know. I think the number in terms of fixing all the potholes is in the billions. And it's obviously, it's like a never-ending thing, you know, that we'll fix the potholes and then come back again. I think the point is, we need to fix the roads. We need to fix the potholes properly so that they don't keep coming back. And then I think we just, you know, we do need to then encourage people to cycle ward because potholes are not caused by cyclists, they're caused by cars. So, you know, let's try to reduce the numbers of cars on the road, build the infrastructure, build infrastructure for cycling, encourage people to cycle ward. And, you know, have a long-term plan for this. I think there's also some issues with the contractors as well, that the contractors that go and fix the potholes, they're kind of encouraged to just patch them up. And actually, what we need is, we need those, those contracts need to be looked at and we need to fix the roads properly, that's important.
Okay, the clock, as ever, is against us. What I would like to do is open up the floor for if you've got any further questions. It's been great that we've been having some as we go along because it's nice that they're in your minds as you hear the points. But has anybody got any other burning questions or related to what you've heard already that you would like to pose to the candidates? Let's get here first of all.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Anthony Cartman, local historian, and also a candidate for this time last year. And I read everyone's manifesto and no one seemed to raise the issue of citizenship education for adults, bearing in mind that my generation of adults had 15 minutes with former councillor Jeff Heathcock telling us about politics. And that was it. So I've also been running some, like all the great Cambridge Crash Course courses, trying to get people interested and educated on the issues that people have been talking about. How would you as councillors persuade Mayor Nick Johnson to use some of this adult education budget to fund basic civics education for adults, not just in Queen Ediths, but across the county?
I'm gonna take this in notice, Georgia. And Oliver, as you're sitting there with the microphone, I'm gonna jump to you first.
I mean, this is obviously quite a specific question. So, yeah, I think this is an interesting subject. I think people, you know, I think people don't know what they can do in their communities. And I think so it's really important that people understand that there are lots of different roles out there. So, yeah, in terms of trying to encourage the mayor to communicate that, I'm not sure how we would go about that. But, yeah, it's absolutely an important thing. I also think in terms of, and I'm sure this happens a bit, but, you know, teaching our children how, you know, about the things that they can do as well. And maybe, I think kids probably, kids are not interested in politics, right? I mean, but, you know, maybe they should have an awareness of how like local government works. And, you know, hopefully then, you know, at some point when they grow up a bit, they might then be interested in getting involved. So, yeah, so not just adult education, but I think, you know, I'd be happy to go into schools and talk about the workings of the city council and things like that, so, yeah.
Thank you, Emily.
That is an interesting question. Education is so important and knowledge definitely is power. I met the mayor at one of his events he did where we were able to ask questions. So that is definitely something I would raise if he did a future event like that. But I think that this is something we should consider to add to school curriculums maybe later on, once they've got a bit of a grasp of politics. But we didn't really learn civics at school. We didn't learn about politics or anything related to that. And I feel that's sort of disservice to us that we have to learn it later in life if we happen to end up in this sort of position. So maybe that's something we could consider as, not technically educational reform, but just additional information that we could give them as an option. Maybe like you say, talks from politicians or people like our brilliant speaker, I'm on ya.
Thanks, Imi and Beth.
Great. Yeah, I think, you know, a lot of people wouldn't even know how to go about standing for the council and what that means. And I think it's really, really important to help people understand how the whole system works. And so I'm a great believer in that and, you know, like proper access to politics and understanding how politics works. And that's, you know, why this, events like this are also really important because it kind of opens up politics and our local democracy. And I think you've just done a very good lobbying job there, basically, Anthony. And if I was elected, I'd love to chat with you further about your ideas on this. And then, as Mayor Nick is a Labour mayor, you know, hopefully you would be able to sit down with him and talk to him about it, wouldn't you?
Great answer. To the conclusion, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna be very strict. And I'm gonna ask each of our candidates here this evening to talk for one minute in their final pitch to tell us why we should vote for them. And I'm gonna give them literally one minute. I'm gonna time it on the clock. And the question is very simple, why should we vote for you? And according to my list, the way we've been going around, and I hope I've been keeping a good eye on it, I think we start with Imi. So, Imi Blackburn-Borgan from the Liberal Democrats, why should we vote for you? And you have one minute, I'll give you a 10-second warning.
Well firstly, thank you Queen Edith Community Forum for organising this hustings. With resident support as your elected councillor, I have had many achievements in Queen Ediths, covering potholes to plan and lighting to licensing waste to weekends. Also such things as school run and safe school streets, pavements and safe routes for pedestrians and social behaviour and unadopted roads, the list goes on. Success has been through being out there, meeting, talking and taking instructions from Queen Edith residents, signposting support to residents with issues that fed them daily on their doorsteps and in their community. As many are aware, I was engaged in the Queen Edith Ward long before I became your local city councillor. And whatever the result, the upcoming election, I'll remain actively involved in this community. But I can achieve so much for the community as your elected city councillor if you again give me your support.
So thank you, Imi Blackburn-Borgan from the Liberal Democrats. Thank you also for keeping your time. And I'm gonna pass the microphone to Oliver Fisher from the Green Party. Oliver, you have one minute. Why should we, and I'm in the ward, vote for you?
I feel like there's something going on here, isn't there? There's a lot of support for Imi here, which is great, great to see. I'm sorry, so, you know, if you elect me to this position, I will work, I will work super hard and I will dedicate my, as much time as I can to, you know, to this community. So, yeah, I'm passionate about local government. I see the importance of it and I can see, I can see that the Green Party is making, you know, we are making steps to actually having real influence on the city council and I want to be part of that as well. So, yeah, I will work, I will work really hard for this community. I will, you know, I will work particularly on environmental issues, of course. But I will also, you know, speak to you all and listen to you and be guided by yous to do the things that this community wants and needs.
Thank you, Oliver Fisher from the Green Party. Thanks for sticking to time as well. And finally, my panelists here tonight, I must hand to Beth Gardner-Smith from the Labour Party. Beth, you have one minute. Why should we vote for you?
So as I said at the beginning, I was born here, I grew up here, moved away and I come back because I think Queen Edith is a fantastic place to live. But it's at a point of real change. And I would love to represent this community and be a strong voice for this community at this point of change as the community grows and develops, to make sure that the community's views are heard and represented in that development and that change. And that are, you know, that principles like environmental sustainability, our biodiversity, you know, and affordability are placed right at the heart of that growth and change within our community. And so I'd love to be your representative, I'd love to be a strong voice for Queen Ediths. And, yeah, that's it. Thanks.